We have three items on the agenda tonight. And I'll start by introducing the board. And my leftover here is Fred Keen, Norah Murad, Irony Lice, I'm Randy Bogart, our recording secretary is Dory Shaw, Dan Stansla, and Terry Tzad. With us tonight, we have our town attorney, Herb Cully, and opposing post tenant officer, Joe Booth, from the town board, Dave Routs, and our town assessor is Darlene Abetacola. As I mentioned, we have three items on the agenda. What I'll have Dory do is read the first application. We'll have the applicant come up to the end of the table, explain what you want to do, bring with you anything that you think is important to your particular application, whether it's diagrams, photos, letters of support, whatever you think is going to help make your case. At that point, the board may have some questions. We'll open it up. The audience may have some comments on any particular application. I will advise just to address the board, not the applicant. At that point, we'll close the meeting. We hope to make a decision on each and every one of these tonight, having anything out of the board members. Okay? Oh, we are down one board member. So instead of, you would need to have four out of six vote in favor of your application. So I just, each applicant, you have the opportunity, if you want to postpone until we have a full board. Our board member that's not here tonight had a death in the family, so he wasn't able to make it. But you can postpone to the next month, or you can say this, go ahead and, we'll go with the board that we have.
Yeah, we have four extra trees. The ones right up.
Well, we have, no, we have three, but there's one that's, Herb's going to handle the first one, so it's really not an application. So with that said, I have Dory.
Oh, okay. Yeah, Herb's going to, Mr. Joseph Fries, you pride that 4752 and 4754 Commercial Drive in New York, request to remove the variance as previously secured at the zoning board of appeals meeting of August 21st, 2017.
Yeah, if you recall, we previously, this is the Faries project on Commercial Drive. We previously granted an area variance. One of the adjoining property owners subsequently brought an action in Supreme Court saying that he had an easement or right-of-way that was impinged by virtue of the site plan that had been proposed by the applicant. Subsequently, the applicant revised the plan, in fact substantially revised the plan, reducing the size, and no longer needs that variance. So they have requested a resolution to withdraw the variance in your approval.
Was that just noted? Do they want us to make a note of that?
I think a motion.
Motion.
The problem that we revised.
We removed the variance.
Motion by Fred, is there a second?
Sorry, Terry, do it.
Second?
Who is it? You're it, Jim.
That doesn't matter.
You can use me.
Okay. All right, there you go. Uh, Norah.
Hi.
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 Hi. Okay, I guess we're all set with that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. The application of Mr. Trevor Kellaro, 79, Merrick Place, New York. The applicant is seeking a five foot, six inch plus or minus front yard, set a area variance to erect a fence five foot, six inches plus or minus forward of his house on the Hilltop Terrace front yard. This area is on median density residential, which does not allow a residential fence to be positioned forward of the frontmost property of the residential building. The applicant is located on a corner lot, Merrick Place and Hilltop Terrace.
Welcome again.
Hi.
You look vaguely familiar.
Yeah, a little bit, right? A couple months ago. So back in October, I applied for a building permit variance to repair what was an existing fence. Come to find out, it's on the town's right-of-way, so I am now applying for a variance to move said fence onto my property. Which being on a corner lot, it is in the frontmost part of my yard.
So I guess my question is, if it's out of the right-of-way now?
No.
He's proposing to pull it out.
Correct.
The, where he plans on placing a new fence is going to be on the right-of-way, but it's still not going to comply with the code.
Correct.
What's the difference between the right-of-way distance to where he's going to place it?
Let's see, right here.
Why don't you speak to everybody so they can hear?
So, I mean, you can pass these, I got some of these, and it's also in the attachment.
Yeah.
So the fence currently extends, is fifteen, a little over fifteen feet away from the house, so that is nine feet, three inches over the property line or onto the right-of-way. So I'm pulling it back.
It's a five-six, is it? Or was it?
Yeah, well, six, six feet, yes.
So it's on his property.
So it's on my property.
But it'd still be a six-foot fence.
Correct.
In the front yard.
Well.
The corner, right?
Corner lot, in the front yard.
Technically, it's in the front yard.
We talked about that last time.
Right.
The reason for the six-foot fence again was?
Well, originally, I was repairing what was existing already, so going under the notion that I could repair an item with like or similar materials, I had done that. Unfortunately, it is in the town's right-of-way, so now I'm just trying to comply with code.
He was keeping the same.
How were you aware that it was on the town line?
Um, yeah.
Did we grant that? Or we didn't?
He replied that it was on the right-of-way.
Okay, so all you're doing now is moving it.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
That's why you said it was on the right-of-way. Because there was one more before.
Right, yeah, that fence has been there for 20 years or so. Obviously, it wasn't an issue then, but things have changed, so.
No, I'm laughing because if they knew it was put 20 years ago in the right-of-way, it would have been an issue. But 20 years ago, you could have put it on the line, it wouldn't have been an issue. I don't have any more questions.
I'm done, I think.
Terry?
No, I was just reading my notes here from the last time, I'm validating for the note.
Terry? Okay. We'll open this up. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on behalf of this particular application? Yes, sir?
Justin Lay, this is eighty-five, Mayor Trevor, and he's trying to, we're in support of this, is trying to prove the area, and I think it's bettering things and be in favor of him being able to do this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Okay. We'll close. Calls, letters, Dory? I don't see anything.
No.
I had letter on our last meeting, and there was four or five individuals here, so.
Is the fence purchased?
Yes, the whole thing is built.
Built, yeah.
Yep, so I'm applying to.
Well, I was wondering why we were talking about a six-foot fence, because when I grew up there, it's, is it basically in the location of the same place that it was?
Yeah, that's exactly where it was, currently where it was.
Okay. So either, either way, I guess it's got to be moved, whether we grant it or whether we don't grant it.
Yes, right.
Either way, it's getting moved.
Either way, yes, correct.
So we, if, being compliant, it would have to be cut off where the house is, right? From that point, so you'd have to bring it in another five and a half, whatever it is, feet?
Six feet.
Then it wouldn't be here. Here wouldn't be that much.
Right, right. Okay, we'll close. Comments? You can have a seat.
For me, we beat this up pretty good last month, a couple months ago. But given the fact that the fence was originally on the right-of-way, that has been a fence for over 20 years, that violated the ordinance, for him to put it where he'd like to put it now on the property line, I don't have a problem with that. Additionally, when he was here a couple months ago, he did have multiple people in the letters that did come in that did support it. So his neighbors were in favor of it. He's asking to put it on his property now, even though it is on a property line, so I don't have a problem, given the fact that neighbors are okay with it. I don't think there's any detriment to the health, safety, or welfare of the town in New York with that fence. I just leave.
Yeah, there was over five people in favor of it.
Last time, yeah.
From the last time.
It was a small group.
I agree.
I think it did that on purpose, though.
Yep.
I'm just kidding.
I happen to agree, and I think it's kind of a hardship situation. He was trying to do the right thing, and it was already there, so.
Terry?
I have no comments. I think everything's been said.
Terry? I would just caution, whichever way we go, that we did grant, we did deny a applicant right around the corner, and I'd call it a similar type situation, where he wanted to come out, and it was still behind the trees, bushes, wherever you want to come. So that only denied it. So I would just caution as we move forward here, that's all.
I think I will add to that, too, and we did it, but I also think that we've approved some as well, so, kind of balance and take each situation on an individuality.
I have a comment on that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the difference there was the one that happened to be right around the corner, not mentioning the application or the applicant, is that was constructed afterwards. This has already been there, and it's an existing fence. Am I wrong on that?
Yes, no, you're right.
No, the other one wasn't constructed.
Yeah, he built it out, he came out with it.
I think we're talking about two different ones. The one, the one he's talking about in the corner wasn't built. We wanted it, he had, they wanted it originally, it was in the right-of-way, the tree is in the, the line of trees is in the right-of-way.
Oh, that one there, I think the one around the corner from him, too.
We wanted it to be put on the other side, he wanted to do the whole thing, we wouldn't give him that.
What's the one up there by your, one that tree picks itself up and roots well south, yeah?
There is a difference.
Yeah, that is a difference, okay, I'm thinking of the other one.
We had, we got a lot of fences.
A lot of fences.
So, I guess with that said, that's not, we won't beat it to death. Somebody want to make a motion? Oh, absolutely.
We did that.
We did that last time, but we'll do it again.
All right.
Whether the battery can be cheap, either means feasible to the applicant.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Just bring it in.
Yeah, bring it in.
But this case, all right, all right, all right.
Difference in the things.
Does everyone change in neighborhood care because of their back coverage?
No. Well, it's Bender for 20 years.
Will live there, right?
Are the requests substantial?
No.
Are the requests have adverse physical or environmental effects?
No.
Are the alleged difficulty self-created?
No.
Just trying to fix it, and doing the best they can.
Well, it's, it is self-created, I mean, if you look at it, and the only reason why is because if he takes it down, then he's actually putting it back up in an area that is against our law.
But the original, self-created, if it was broken, he was trying to fix it with the same type of materials and thinking he could go right where it was.
But he's moving it.
Because he has to.
I know.
That's what I'm saying, I don't think it's self-created.
He's taking it off the right of way.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's the bit, let's just, we can agree to disagree.
So with that said, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by, by?
Second.
Two, the motion is two.
To prove it, yeah.
To prove the, as of that.
As of that, no.
Second by, Fred?
No.
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 So can we take this to next month, now that I know the result of this month? Given there's one board member missing, you said we can, if I wish to choose, to come back next month?
I'd edit the petition. The time is up. Well, you have to change the application, but I think you shot it down by four to two.
Right, four to two.
So that would make your.
One would change it. Four to three. But if you change the application, you could come back.
And spend another $100 to get it shot down, maybe?
But you can't come back with the same application, is what he's telling you. So you'd have to move something substantial.
It was out on substantial portion of my property.
Well, it's only on five feet.
Right, but it's also 50 feet long, so. And not to mention that the fence was 15 feet outward from the home, had I left it there, right, 15 times 50, that's quite a bit of property that I really thought I owned when I purchased the home, but had I just let the fence deteriorate?
Do you?
Could I ask the attorneys?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Scher?
Sure.
Could I ask? Do we have the permission to waive, if he chooses to come back, the fee of $100?
Only if you deny it without prejudice, I don't think you can just waive it.
Okay.
You can't tip.
Sure. Okay. The application of Mr. John Lapino, 4340, State Route 12, New York. Mr. Lapino is seeking a 21-foot plus or minus front yard area variance to place a shed in the front yard. Accessory structures are not permitted in a front yard located in a low density residential zone.
Welcome.
Hello. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, in the packet I submitted, you see a survey of the property that was done when we built the home about three years ago, roughly. We acquired the property through tax auction from out of town, the previous owner basically abandoned the property, and we substantially invested in the site work to be able to construct the home three years ago. And this past fall, we, we had been saving for a shed to place on the property to house a large garden tractor with a large snowblower attachment. The driveway is roughly 170 feet long from the house, three cars wide at the top, and then about a car and a half wide going down, which was kind of, and the property itself is three acres, so between mowing and the snowblowing, we wanted the larger snowblowing attachment. So we wanted the shed positioned in the front, kind of the side front of the lot, so that we'd be able to hold the tractor out onto the paved area because it's not really, there's no way I can bring the tractor from behind the property, which is a grassy area, to get to the front. The property is too soft in the winter time, it never looks good to the front of the house. So, at the time when I went to purchase the shed, actually, we actually had a pad created for the shed in the driveway, when I had the driveway done. I researched on the town site, I didn't see anything on the town site about placement of sheds, or really discussion of the permits, now that was about three years ago, I don't know if it's changed since then. So we went and had the pad made, and then saved up for the shed, and had the shed placed this fall by Waterville Sheds. Unfortunately, neither the paving contractor or the shed contractor enlightened me that there was placement regulations on sheds, which I can perfectly understand in a subdivision way, would not want sheds placed in the front of the property. But this property, again, is, it's on a state highway, there's, we have, I brought some Google Maps for you guys to look at. We have absolutely no neighbors on any side of us. No neighbors can be constructed behind us on either side or across from us, we can't, there's nowhere to possibly build around us. So, I'm hoping with that in mind, that we can get the variance to place a shed in the front of the property. And again, if you look at the pictures, this is the Google Maps you can pass around, this is, the first page is our property, second page is our closest neighbor, which is quite a way down Route 12, and I'm just pointing out that that neighbor had a shed on their front side of the property, in somewhat similar orientation to what we would want, but ours is extremely much further back from the road than that other home would be. The placement of the shed is actually, if you look at the survey, would be placed about 150 feet from our front, front edge property line, back from the road.
That was, I was trying to ask you how far, how far to the shed.
So if you looked at the survey, there's a line in the front that signifies the beginning of our property line. From that line to the edge of the shed is about 150 feet, but there's about another 50 feet from where my property line is to.
To the road.
To the road, so it's actually, I want to technical about, it's actually 200 feet from the shed to the road.
Okay.
I have approximately 13 trees between where the shed sits and the road, between the shed and the road, that's somewhat obstructed from view, and as you can also see in the pictures I provided in the application, I'm hoping they made it way to the guys.
Is this all state right-of-way here?
That's all state right-of-way, we had to apply for a permit for the state for the driveway there. I'm also proposing that we could plant a line of arbor bites that will, you know, start with like a four-foot arbor bite, which will grow to help conceal it even further, but like I said, there's also a bunch of trees between here and the road that are already obscured to something great. We did have the shed made and painted to match the house, so it blends with the siding color of the house, it's a matching color. The front view of the shed looks like this, with this face as the driveway, you can't see this from the road, it's kind of side-facing, so you can't see this from the road, but this is actually what the shed looks like. It's not, we didn't just throw up any structure, there would put a nice-looking, professional structure there to match the house architecturally. So we're, we're hoping that you'll, you'll find that it'll allow us, since there's no neighbors, and it's on a state highway, we're not in a subdivision, we're hoping that we can get the variance to replace the shed. And it's not directly in front of the house, which you can probably tell from this picture here.
So it is there, or it's out?
Yeah, it's right there.
It's, see behind those trees?
Mm-hmm.
It's there, it's, it's not directly in front of the house, it's actually off to the side.
Yeah.
And there's about 11 feet between the corner of the shed to where the garage is, so it's, it's not right up against a structure or anything like that, but.
Why don't you tell the board exactly where you are, I'm going up.
So if you're going up 12, say, when you start up 12 by Utica National, you start going up, you know where the emergency truck stop is?
Yep.
We're right before the yellow barrels for the truck stop. It actually was a vacant property that was owned by somebody that, they let it go, it was kind of, we didn't have to clear the property, it was, pretty much looks how it does now, but we had to invest a lot of site work to get the property suitable to build the house, we invested over $100,000.
On the left-hand side going out.
On your left-hand side.
I think Robert Fortesolo was the owner of that, Fortesolo?
I can't remember.
No, maybe not.
So it ended up going to tax auction, we acquired it at tax auction.
That sets way back in.
Yes, we got all the required permits for the driveway and further construction, obviously through the town, and we constructed the house about three years ago, so. What was formerly a vacant lot, that nobody was really keeping up, and basically had chained, a chain in the front of it that said no dumping, we've taken to a property that we've developed and now provides between eight and nine thousand dollars a year in property tax, rather than to the town in New Hartford. So it's, it's a great property, we're happy to be there. Like I said, no construction anywhere around this can take place, this is all ravine and then on this side, ravine in the front, this is no building on this side, and there's no building we own, way far behind.
I'm familiar with the property, there's a lot of shale back in that area, I lived right back there.
That's why it was partly so expensive to build there. There's, there's only about that much topsoil, and it's all shale, so.
Yeah, and it is landlocked, because on the left side, you got your ravine there.
Yep, yep. And then there's about 10 acres on this side that go behind the truck stop, that's owned by somebody else, but it's not built.
Yeah, states run the fence all the way up through.
Definitely, the black fence runs the whole lane, yep.
And how come you didn't have it, even with the rest of the building?
As far as where it was set, basically because of the way the driveway was designed, there's.
For the door openings?
Yeah, the door actually opens, it's tough to see on the drawing, but the door opens this way towards the driveway, so you can kind of drive right out with the tractor into the driveway. There's no pavement on that side of the garage. I guess hindsight's 20/20, I guess we could have done that if I had known, but, so I just can't, if I put it behind the house, I'll never, I'll never use a tractor and a snowblower attachment around in the winter time. If you have a heavy snowfall, I'll never make it, I'll never be able to fair enough to get to the front, it kind of defeats the purpose of the pandemic to some degree.
I'm curious about something. You say here that you did not find anything on the town's website about placement of a shed. Did you ever call the codes office?
I didn't, I should have, I don't deny that I should have, but I didn't, I looked, I didn't see anything, and I honestly, based on the property being rural, it is, even though it's really in Hartford, it's pretty rural, I didn't think there would be any ordinance against it, and honestly, I really didn't even think that there would be.
Did you tell them how long your driveway is from Route 12 to?
Yeah, so from the front door of the garage, from the overhead door of the garage to where my property line ends is 167 feet, and from there it's another 50 feet to the road.
So it's over 200 feet, you plowed it yourself?
Yes, with the tractor that is out within the shed, yeah. And like you said, the house closest to us has one in the, almost the exact orientation, it's a little further off on the side, but it's in the front side. So we saw that also, thinking there's theirs, we could kind of put ours in a similar fashion, but, like I said, should have made the assumption, I should check with Joe, we didn't. Now I have a situation where I have the shed where it is, and I don't have the capacity to move it, and I already paid for the pad for the driveway, I paid for the shed, so they got to place the shed, and now here we are.
My question, Terry? No, I'm, I'm perfectly happy with it. Okay. I don't have any questions.
Not, not at this time, maybe we'll look like them or some kind of.
Okay, we'll open this up, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on behalf of this particular application?
I live on the property that is abutting the rear.
Name, for the record, your name?
Skane, Louis Skane, 18 Laurelwood Drive. I just wanted to say that I abut that property, so, you know, I don't necessarily have anything to say about it, but I just, you know, I think, you know, when I'm here this evening, I saw the structure, and it, you know, doesn't appear that it's going to create any kind of, I don't have the objection necessarily.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on behalf of this particular application? Okay. We'll close. No calls, but we did get a, United County Department of Plan, with no recommendation.
You had me on baited breath. It's like, what could they be saying, county, you know? It's a state, it's a state road.
The state DOT does not have an issue. So, and that's it. Comments?
I'll just start off with a comment, because I live in that neighborhood. I remember the Antoinette property, as Mr. Skane would know, I live right up the street from there. I really know that property because of the way I travel it, I walk it. It is hidden, it is surrounded with no other property that's going to be built around there, and I think because of the length of the driveway, and I think the visual part of it is not going to have any adverse effect, my, my thought process is, it's a place that's there, and it is unique, and I'm going to base up my opinion on that.
Okay. I'd pretty much agree with Terry.
I pretty much agree, but I have to say, I can't, what I have a hard time with is when we say on one application, well, they didn't ask for the, they didn't check with codes first, it's already up there, and it's okay, and then another individual comes and has to remove something, it's, it makes, it makes our job difficult, and that's what we're here for, to say yay or nay, but I do have a hard time sometimes when we're saying, okay, yes, you have this, you still didn't come in and ask, and then maybe because the last effort is also, this one has so much, and the last one is trying to make the most of a smaller area, and we deny it, and it doesn't make any sense to just say, go ahead just because you have this.
No.
It's, it's still variance, to me, it's like they're still asking for the same, and then.
We'll just comment, we said we did, throughout the whole building process, we did.
When it closed, if somebody wants to reopen, we can reopen, but.
I get what she's saying. Yeah, I, I agree with Terry, this one's so far back, the only thing I'd want to see is, for me personally, is to keep, must maintain the trees on the front of.
Yeah, the vegetation's still there. Yeah, the vegetation's still there.
Cedar trees that you have, you just have to leave them out there. You already got a plan, it's-
What the, I'm not supposed to-
We can put some-
Do we want to open it up?
Yeah, we'll do the according to our motion, depending on the discussion.
Here.
I have no objections to opening it up.
Okay.
Sorry, I mean, I, I mean, I'm listening to the others, but-
I don't have any objections.
I planted a row of ten trees in the front, and those are continuing to grow. But I'm, I'm proposing I'm adding four more cedars in front of it, directly in front of it. I've got some, the way the driveway is carved out between the shed and the little piece of driveway here, I have a little bit of ground right in front of the shed. And I'm proposing I'll add four more cedars to even further obstruct it from, from the other ones I've already planted.
And I know where you can get those cedars.
So do I.
Yeah, so do you.
John, get my card before you leave.
No.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, but just keep this, just keep it hidden, it's so far back, doesn't make a difference.
There's not going to be any building.
I drove in today and I drove it off.
How about we look at the criteria?
Yep.
Whether the benefit can be achieved by the means feasible to the applicant. Probably.
Yes, sure.
No questions left.
I'm just sorry for changing neighbor character nearby properties. Whether requests are substantial.
Well, except anywhere else, we'd say it's in the front. We would say it's in the front of the house, that shed's in the front of the house in Hartford.
Yeah, but this is any situation like-
It is, I'm, I agree, but I'm just saying, is it substantial?
Okay. Whether a question of adverse physical environmental effects?
No.
Whether it allows difficulty to self-creating, towns it?
Yes.
The only house that would ever be affected by that would be the Skanes and the next-door neighbor, but then the Galers. I certainly don't see the Galers here, Mr. Skane spoke about it, it wasn't impairing any vision or creating any type of impairment to him, so I don't see any other house even near there. Except for the deer that roam through the ravine.
The deer ticks.
The deer ticks.
Obviously, we-
So as I said, does somebody want to make a motion for it?
I don't, I'm not going to accept the application as requested.
Second?
I won.
Terry? All right.
Hi.
Hi.
Name?
You want to?
Yes. Better prove?
Yep.
Thank you. Order two. You're all set.
Thank you, appreciate your time, Ken.
I don't know, did he?
Did he get a building permit? So he's got, he's got a building permit.
Was that our fine zoning office? I noticed that.
So you need, you need to call codes to get a building permit.
Okay. I think we did paperwork already, right? I just, we're complete, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We could never say we're always all the same, but like-
The application of Mr. Omar Masood for a vacant property located on Mohawk Street, town of New Hartford. This property is located in a residential agricultural zone, which requires one hundred feet of frontage. Mr. Masood is seeking a one hundred and ten foot plus or minus frontage area variance to create a six plus or minus acre lot.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you, folks.
Can I hear your names, sir?
Andrew Masood, I'm sorry.
Oh, Omar, sorry. Masood, yes.
Well, the floor is yours.
Floor is mine. Well, I have a prospective buyer, wants to buy some back land. And the codes say he needs a hundred and fifty foot frontage to do that. But he doesn't want to go to the expense of buying a lot he's never going to use. He just needs enough frontage for a driveway to get to that property. So we're looking for probably about a forty-foot driveway.
Is this the area that, do you have like the cones there and the-
Across the street.
Other side? On the other side.
On the other side.
The property that he's buying, does it border Mohawk Street?
Right here. Right here, Matt? Is there a battle line over there somewhere?
Yes.
That corner right there. You find this.
Find this property here. And you want to put the driveway there.
Right here, here, yeah.
But does he own this property from here to there?
No, 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 I don't. This is all vacant land here.
So how is, how is he going to drive by me on your property, your localist? You're giving him, you're giving him an easement?
No, he's going to purchase forty feet.
Oh, that's where he's going to purchase from here.
Rather than a hundred and fifty feet to access that, that corner. It's about six acres back here.
He owns six acres.
He doesn't own it yet, he wants, he wants to buy it from me.
But this is all totally landlot, in terms of the roads concerned.
No, it's not landlot.
That, that lot is.
No, it isn't. He just bought it.
Yeah, but you can't get to, you can't get to Mohawk Street in that lot.
Yes.
I thought you were selling that lot like that.
No, he wants to buy that lot and access it from Mohawk Street.
What other access would there be then? I guess what he's asking, am I correct? How else would he get to this six acres?
Oh, that's the only way we can get to it. Or from Sessions Road from here.
If you're interested, anybody that's interested, I want to just come up and sort it in.
Thank you.
But he can get to that property off of Sessions Road?
No, he has to buy property from me in order to do it.
Here's the property, and this is what he wants to do, to sell forty feet, so he can get back to this.
So this is just going to be a-
What's the width of, what's the width of this driveway that you're selling it?
He's looking for about forty feet.
Forty feet wide, and what's the length?
About seven hundred.
Seven hundred feet long. And you've got six acres back here.
Right.
And you own the property on both sides of this Sessions Road?
No, just this-
Just the side?
Just this land here, vacant land here. This is similar, it's going to be similar to this subdivision right here.
Do you own the property on this side?
None of these side, we own property where, where Mr. Masood has the cones.
Across the street? Does this affect your rental?
Personally, no, we're more impacted by the property with the cones and the sign and so on. Yeah.
For the record, for the record, can we get your names just?
Well, that's in the two thirty-nine.
Yes, Edith Guana, we own the property across the street from where-
Where the cones are?
Right next, right next door, right.
Can I hear what's spelled in there?
It's B as in bomb, U E N as in Nancy.
Two thirty-nine.
Yeah, can you explain it a little?
Well, yeah, they want him to address that issue. Omar, are you saying that the applicant, if they get the variance, they're agreeing to a restriction, that this lot can never be built on as a residence? Is that what you said?
No. No, you talking about the back lot that he's buying?
Yes.
Wants to build a house there.
Cause I'm just thinking in the long run, could he subdivide, cause they're six acres.
Oh, that's the same thing.
Yeah.
Not with a forty-foot driveway, he's not going to be able to subdivide it.
No, the door and print.
I think that's the difference.
I sent it, I sent it to, I got it late today, so I sent an email, maybe they get it.
Well, how do we know that the person's agreeing to that?
Well, we don't.
We don't know.
Well, I'm not sure what, especially if there's maybe a issue.
Well, the, um, the email that we got.
Yeah, I, I printed it out.
Yeah, Jim, Jim Bart, does Omar have a copy?
No, I don't.
No, I just got it.
Okay, Jim Bart Koyak, who is an engineer and Dennis Davis at Oneata County Department of Public Works, sent a letter today to Lori Shaw indicating that the DPW had received the area variance application in accordance with two thirty-nine F, that's the section under which they have jurisdictional review. He states, "It is assumed that access to the proposed lot will be from the existing field access along Mohawk Street. If existing field access along Mohawk Street will be improved, a permit will be required." Second, Section one thirty-six of New York State Highway Law requires a permit to be obtained for any access, construction, or reconstruction within the right-of-way of the county highway. Any above recommendation given by this department will be required, a required action for permit approval. Permits are obtained through the Division of Highways and Bridges. Items of concern, and I'm sure Omar's going to address these, verify that adequate site distance is provided for future, future access location. Development shall not adversely affect the highway drainage or drainage of adjacent properties."
It's a driveway permit, basically.
And drainage.
Unless you do, unless you do additional lots, if you do additional lots, you got a bigger issue. Basically, the buyer has to get a driveway permit. If he gets access.
No problem. No. You know what, Herb, buyer, there are no covers there now, so the county will direct us accordingly what to do. No ditch there.
I won't say that the county will do it.
On that side of the road, no ditches at all.
They'll say it's within their jurisdiction.
They'll say it's within, you'll have to give them a plan of how you're going to handle the drainage and how you're going to handle a driveway permit, if you're given. Right now you can't even subdivide it because you're, you're asking to make a, a lot, a substandard lot.
A flat, it's a flat, it's a flat lot.
It's a substandard lot because he's not taking a hundred and fifty feet, so you got a big problem with that, to get a subdivision.
Omar, why isn't he taking one fifty?
Doesn't want to go to the expense of a lot plus the six acres.
That's my question.
He doesn't?
Want the lot, he's going to get a hundred and fifty feet, he only needs forty feet of it. Why, why buy a, a building lot to access his building area?
Because that's what the law in the town says, this is a tough one. You're trying to make a substandard lot.
Of a building lot, in addition to buying the other property.
What you're trying to do is make a substandard lot.
Change the laws.
But you got twelve hundred feet of frontage.
Oh, you got plenty of frontage.
Right, and this board, like if you had tools, you're trying to carve one out for you, might be able to help you. When you're sitting there with twelve hundred feet of frontage and you want to make a forty-foot lot, it's a, that's a problem, because that's a problem in this town.
I have a personal concern with this, a hundred and fifty feet. You're going to use a little bit of it for a driveway, he's not going to maintain the rest of it, it's going to look like hell. That's one, that, that's a personal, unless I go mow it myself, you know? That's one problem, that one rise there. It's similar to the property right next door, this is a porch out of a flat, but it's similar to that.
You get it, it's just, it's a problem when you're trying to make a substandard lot when you have twelve hundred feet of frontage. And I know he don't want to pay it, and you make a good point about him not mowing it. But, but that's a problem at this board, I think. I don't know, I want to speak for anybody else.
So if, if, you definitely got it at a hundred and fifty feet, then what you're saying?
I'm saying that's the-
His, his opinion.
My only opinion.
His opinion is, is that, yes. That's the rightful opinion, and that's what you're basing it on. Unfortunately, that's, that's what he's saying.
It's a hard one.
It is a hard one.
It's much easier for him. But we're-
But I think the two thirty-nine comes into play.
Yeah, but the two thirty-nine will be done when they go through, and he's going to get a subdivision approval. I mean, that's common when you do a subdivision where you're going to build for the town to handle that. Because you'll, if it was a, if you, if you didn't need to be before us, and you did the hundred and fifty feet, they're going to look at those issues when you have, when you, when you bring in a survey with it all broken up, the planning board or Joe, I don't know exactly how, they're trying to change that, but you'll bring it in and you'll ask for a sub, a minor subdivision, it's only two lots, and they'll tell you what you have to do. All of which is approvable and very doable. This is difficult.
Okay, I understand.
Can he withdraw his application?
Sure.
And then if you want to come back, there won't be any fees or anything like that? And if you have another alternative? I don't know, you may have an alternative plan, I'm just trying to-
What benefit is if I withdraw my application?
I'm just saying that there may be a thought, otherwise, we're going to proceed and we're going to deny or approve. That's what I'm, I'm trying to-
He's trying to save some money. And like I said, personally, if I do mow this property for him.
Okay.
So we'll proceed.
Then you want to proceed?
Yeah, we have no choice, can you?
Hey, that's why, that's why we're here, we applied for the variance to see, that's why we're here. Okay, we totally respect the buyer, that's what we do and kind of-
No. Whatever happens in discussion, we're probably not dropping it. Maybe the hundred and fifty feet will give them access to that six acres, develop lots back there, is that possible? Could he make more than one lot back there?
Well, he, he won't unless he makes the, I, I, I don't want to try to tell you or him what to do, but to make multiple lots, you only have enough room with a hundred and fifty feet for one lot. If he wanted to, what he would then need to do is have a dedicated road brought in, and you need a minimum of sixty feet for that, isn't it sixty? You need a minimum of sixty, then you can open up the six acres and back some additional lots. But he'd be putting in a, a road that looks like it's eight hundred feet or something.
It's very expensive to run a road.
Yeah, you'd be putting in a full-blown, I mean-
He would, not me.
He would be, I mean, if that's his goal, then he really should take more, buy more of your property.
Okay, do another question. In the event, I would subdivide all this property.
Yes.
Twelve hundred feet, a hundred and fifty foot frontage comes up, even numbers, and there's forty-nine feet left over, okay? And I never sell that back land. It's going to be farmland, okay? Would I be able, in the future, apply for, apply for a forty-nine foot driveway? Do you get to that, or is that still out of the question?
Here's what's going to happen, Omar. Let's say you did what you said. I like you, but let's say you did what you said.
Imagine if he didn't like it.
You had twelve hundred and forty-nine feet, and you divide it by one fifty, like you said, you end up with eight point three-three lots. But you're really going to end up with eight lots. One of them is going to be eight plus point three-three, that's how you're going to get your frontage out. That's how you're going to do it, because the planning board is never going to give you a major subdivision and allow you to do it with one little piece hung off the end. Because then you'll be making a substandard lot to try to do it, and you'll be back before this board again, and we're going to scratch our heads and say, just make it eight lots and give everybody else an extra fifty feet.
No, what I'm looking for, what do I do?
With the bed. One of the hundred and fifty lots plus the extra forty-nine feet is going to have six acres in the back. It'll be in a state lot. This is hard, it's not easy. It's hard for you, it's going to be hard for your buyer to do what he wants to do if he's here.
There's one other way I can do it. Take it out loud. Give that guy a hundred and ninety-nine feet. Ask him, and ready, let me drive to his property to get there.
He can give you a, he can give you an easement permit or otherwise, yes. He could be, that would be a, a way to, you could do that to him. Let him buy the hundred and fifty feet, and let him give you back-
Hundred ninety-nine feet.
A hundred and ninety-nine feet, and then let him give you back an easement, plant, mow, or do anything you want.
To access that back property.
You can control it on your own.
Anybody familiar with that back property? Probably the most beautiful lot in New York, New Hartford.
Then he should have a hundred and fifty feet to go with it.
It is absolutely gorgeous.
Or a hundred and ninety-nine feet.
Or a hundred and ninety-nine.
Darlene, you get that when you assess it on the tax rolls, it's probably the nicest lot of your-
I'm telling the town assessor all about it now.
You're better than that.
Darlene?
You better adjust your air-
Darlene, can you hear that?
You better adjust your air.
You're sure that I'll be biased.
Nah, you, you got a lot of options here. You got a lot of good options, except for that option.
Well, he just wanted to go to the expense of a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah, well, I mean, if that's the most beautiful lot, and if you got that property, if I was you, I'm not going to tell you, he's in the business. And he knows, I think he gave you the right direction, in my, my opinion.
Want to list it for me?
No.
That's a, that's a public area, ask him that after we close.
No, it'll be no.
I can, I can, I'll be back out, I'm sorry. Not a big deal.
He was moving into New Hartford too, right? He went from the area and then he's moving back in.
He's out of town or coming back to Hartford.
I think you're holding the trump cards, I really do.
Who, Tim, the buyer?
Sure is, sure are.
Now, how am I going to get Bert- Now, how am I going to give verification that he has to have 150 feet? Will I get a notice or a letter or something?
And what about this letter that came during?
It's just for the 239.
I'll just tell him he has to have 150 feet.
It's got to be surveyed, and you got to do a lot of something. You can call Joe.
All we need to do, right? You're going to notice a denial.
Okay, yeah.
A denial, we're going to deny, if we could deny your variance request.
Yeah.
Okay, if that's.
I see that coming. I see the denial coming.
I do too, but.
Has anybody ever voted six to nothing?
All the time.
Yeah?
Omar, on your application, Joe signed the bottom, and he disapproved your application because you didn't have 150 feet of frontage.
Right.
Says it right on there, and he signed it.
Oh, okay.
It's right on the bottom of your application.
Oh, okay, good, good.
So that's.
I don't want, I don't want the buyer to take that look for another lot, you know, for a full lot. All right. Thank you.
Well, we haven't voted yet. I was giving you an option to get out first, before we vote.
I sold that guy some trees.
Omar, I guess, then I have a question for you.
Yes.
Do you want us to proceed, or do you want to withdraw? What do you want to do, up to this point?
Proceed? A what?
You'll probably get voted down if we proceed.
Well, is that, okay.
That's probably what you want.
I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know.
I don't know.
Did I re-press?
No, we can't.
We didn't vote yet.
Asking, do you want us to proceed?
Do you want us to proceed to vote on it?
Or what?
No one has.
I have no other choice.
Or withdraw.
What's advantage by withdrawing?
You can actually come back to this board without paying another fee, and you can actually look at this application if you change your mind for some other reason where you may need a variance, or he's going to deny you again.
And Omar, you already got your denial and writing there.
Yes! So see, six to nothing, right?
I can't tell you.
Should we draw?
I'm not going to tell you what to do.
Okay, I'll withdraw. Andrew move?
We can't tell you, but. Well. It's the rules, the rule.
Well, for the, for the record, will Dory, do you want to?
Mr. Masood withdrew?
Oh, here, there. I'll make a motion that I think that we have an applicant here who has a misunderstanding at this particular time and wished to possibly come back once he gets a full understanding of what was just presented to him by the 239 that he saw prior to this. And without prejudice, we will allow him to come back if he wishes to come back because of the document that was just presented to him just two minutes ago.
One second.
What?
Can you do a third? Just a second, so you can do it.
You're all set.
Omar, do we have a copy of that letter, it's in email?
I got it, I gave it to him.
It's in the mail.
Oh, we got it.
I didn't write any notes or phone numbers on it.
I'm just, just trying to help my buyer.
Did you open it up? Oh, that was one couple.
Now, there's a, the property. We're off the record right now.
Okay.
We're off the record right now, okay? The property next door to this has the same type of apparently, he must have got in before, before the zoning was changed.
Very, very difficult to do a sub.
There's one down the road to it, there's another one just down the road.
What's that zone there?
Armstrong, Omar, on Mohawk Street, got two houses off of one.
That was a long time ago, too.
That way back, right?
That way back.
Yeah.
But they didn't have 1,200 feet of.
No. It's not a hardship, there's 1,200 foot of road frontage there.
But you got, you got many professional people in this room that can help you in the future, but today, they can't help you because they're here in a different capacity. I would advise you, as someone that I know you, that maybe you may want to refer to some of these people down the road, as long as it's not a conflict of what we're doing here today.
Well, nevertheless, it's not a matter of hardship, or wife or death, or anything like that.
No.
I just, actually, I act you, I act you in behalf of the buyer. Be very, be very prepared, you know what I mean?
Oh, really?
You're doing them a favor, you asked, you told them you'd.
If I could save the expense of buying the full lot, like I told you, I know it's going to happen. I see it, it's all over the place. A lot of people buy these big lots and don't take care of them.
Some people buy small lots and don't take care of them.
They're Hungarians.
No, Ukrainians.
Ukrainians, good. Ukrainians.
You want a motion for a? I'll make a motion in two, last minute.
Okay, folks.
All right.
Omar, how is this your nephew?
My son.
His son.
Oh, he was son, yeah.
That's my baby.
It's the baby? He's down in Florida or down south anywhere?
The reason why I brought him was.